Our meeting will now come to order. Please join me in pledging allegiance. And welcome to silence for our many women and the armed forces, and for our police and firefighters who protect us and our community every day. Please be seated. At this time, we wish our two comments on agenda items from department heads and the village administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Number four, A and B. Under A, we have $29,510, $29,510 in change in our account for the civil service official law. And we're here to do it to move that over to this year. And also, we were fortunate enough to receive $30,000 in additional funds during the past year, which we're asking to also put out of account. And that was proceeds of a major drug investigation where we worked with Nassau County PD. On number 15, this is, we do this across the year. We use the way the trucks and bush vehicles that we do stop, we need to have these scales calibrated by the state vehicles on the location. So we're asking permission to send them off so they can have that. And we'll read that for court. Number 13, with the upcoming retirement of Inspector Doyle in the end of September, we are asking for the ability to hire one more officer. Nassau County may have a class in September. And we would like to have the ability to put a person in a class and not wait until April. And number 14, again, with the upcoming retirement of Inspector Doyle, we're asking to replace him by a lieutenant, sergeant to lieutenant and officer to sergeant.
If you're going to leave an academy in September, what's the alternative? Can you look after the other academy, the others up in county?
Yes, I call stuff in county and also Westchester. And one who does have a class in October, as long as the county can get us some bodies or like that, you should be able to get in there. And now we might have a couple of alternatives. There might be a similar, an RPD officer or something like that.
Mr. Giavellino.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Mr. Bush, please. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to update the board on a few things within the building department. The original property request folders, we received about 1,000 folders request for that. And we actually sent out to the residents just a little over 100. So they have received their original property folders. As far as the DRS digital scanning, we're in phase three right now. And we're about 50% done with that last phase of digital scanning.
Okay, and is that everything that you had?
That's it.
Was that everything that you had?
That's it.
I have a question about the paperwork, about the original leads and all the paperwork that can make connected to each address. So could you still feel confident then that they were actually in place so that you could get through this other process of returning the papers to them?
Yes.
Because I remember that there was a time when the paperwork for one house was in several different places.
It's all consolidated to one place right now. It's all digitally scanned, most of it. And we're about phase, phase three is about 50% done. So we're looking to go, hopefully by the end of the year to be completely digitized with the property files.
Very good, very nice. Our chief, Strisco.
Just a reminder to everyone, Giuseppe, there are the, right?
Yes.
This is the piece of paper that Giuseppe is talking about. I mention this at every single meeting. Again, we've spent the last three years digitizing all the records and everything else. We're giving each property owner the opportunity to collect the file and have the original records on your home. So all you have to do is, on your way out today or whatever, just pick up one of these forms, bring them some to your neighbors, just simply fill it out, bring it to the building department, and you will be able to get a copy of your original documents of your home. So whoever's owned it, everything that goes with it. So please do me a favor and please take the time to pick one up.
And by the way, some of the older houses might find some very interesting paperwork on those very, very old houses. And we want you to really take good care of that. Maybe even let us know that there was something special there. Because it's the history of every house in the village, literally, literally, yeah. Why, Chief? Strisco.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items, items 11 and 12. Item number 11 is the evil stabilization train. We have portable rescue jacks. If the car is overturned on the side, these jacks help stabilize the car and make the situation safer for us to remove a person from the car. The company is sponsoring a training up in their factory upstate. And we'd like to send eight members to attend that, the Gulf University train, to get better equipped on, better trained on the rescue jacks. Item number 12, applying for a grant. We recently purchased portable radios that cost $45,000. I spoke to legislature, Laura Schiefer's office, and I'm trying to pursue a grant for $75,000 to offset that cost. And I'm looking forward to be able to pursue that.
Do you feel we've been going to have success? And we've got a sense of history on it?
We were successful in getting a previous grant of $185,000 to Senator Ken Adams' office, the help of Karen Altman. And it was a long process, but we did our work and we made it happen. So it's a lot of work and I'm going to try and make it happen.
Chief.
Chief, updating firefighters who are going to train.
Yes.
When they come back, will you share some of that information with the rest?
Absolutely. They'll be able to train other members. You can't send a whole fire department there.
I understand. I just want to make sure that the residents of the village understand that we're setting eight, that everybody will benefit for those eight when they come back.
Absolutely.
Chief, I have a question. You said you spoke to Senator Adams at the time you got the grant. Could we talk to Senator Thomas currently and see if he can help out with some of his critics?
Funny you mention that. I got a voicemail a couple of days ago, asking for a list of fund requests. So I'm putting that together through his office for this coming year and the following. So I'm putting together a list of wish I could.
Mr. Di Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items on the agenda tonight. Item number 24 is a change order for the water tower. If you recall, the work that was being done on Old Country Road when it was torn up, this was some additional valve work that needed to be done that we discovered when we started the project. So this change order, A and B, A is for the actual work that was done, B is for the design of the work that needed to be done. Item, excuse me. Item number 25 is, I am requesting an increase to the budget for the well nine rehabilitation project, capital project, from $185,000 to $230,000. The bulk of this request is due to a transfer pump that failed during, it's a transfer pump between the well and the stripping tower at well nine that occurred during the rehabilitation process. So this request is for the new pump and for also the program that goes along with that pump. I'm going to skip ahead to items number 27 and 28. These items are only done this evening as part of the emerging contaminants that the water department will be addressing. In order to qualify for grants that the state is offering, we, the board and the village need to show that we are willing to spend the money to do the treatment in order to qualify for these bonds that the state is offering. So the first treatment is for wells eight and 12. And the second one, 28, is for wells 10 and 11. These are, I know it says well, wellhead treatments and wells eight and 12 for AOP removal. It's actually an AOP filtration system for removal of that dioxide. So I need to just put a word in on that. So these are requests for bond resolutions in order to pay for these two programs. They're obviously, both are significant in cost. There's also secrets attached to both of these, which again, were required in order to qualify for the grants being offered by the state. There is a deadline for these. Filing needs to be done in, I believe it's September 12th, which would be prior to the next four weeks. And lastly, item number, item number 29, it is an award bid for the renovation of the bathrooms on the first floor of the Dodge City Public Library. There's the four bathrooms which are adjacent to the, I guess initially the front desk and the children's area, they're on the back deck. So the four bathrooms are going to be renovated into, there'll be one hand accessible bathroom, the children's bathroom, and an adult bathroom. So actually be three bathrooms.
That'll be great to see. Really, really special one time.
I know, I agree.
Do you know when the approval is ready?
Well, after this, if this is approved this evening, then we need to get the contract signed, get insurance in place. I'm sure there'll be some equipment that needs to be ordered. So I'm hoping within the, you know, maybe within the next three weeks, possibly four weeks. Are we, are we comfortable with this bidder? Oh, yes, we did check his references and we are comfortable, yes. We've had a recent bathroom experience, so we're. Not, not the same. I know you guys were concerned when they were a little bitter.
Well, we had a low.
Well, it was, it was a very low price. The budget for this project was $100,000, but it came in at $48,000. So that raised the red flag with us. But when we, we did our checks, actually, some of the comments we received were, we were a little, you know, some of the comments we got back from other people who have used them have said that we were concerned that the price seemed very low also, but they did a great job, so. Also, I'd like to point out why are you here? You're on vacation.
I wanted to compliment you for coming in.
I tried to follow it up.
It's starting to question judgment. Also, I'd just like to point out, as Joe pointed out, we are doing work on water filtration. So things that you read in the newspaper and in letters are wrong and incomplete and incorrect. We are taking action on things that actually aren't complete yet by the state. So we are taking a lot of action, spending a lot of money to try and fix or correct or filter our water. So we are very wary as a board and as our department heads, and we're taking action.
So answer this, what kind of filtering do you do with the 1-4 dioxide? Is it similar to the filtering that we're doing now?
There are no filtration systems currently in place now that treat 1-4 dioxide, which is the need for these new filtration systems. So this is, we're starting a pilot program next week at wells 10 and 11 to test a new system. The Department of Health is making us go through a pilot program. The system is in place in, I believe, two or three other water districts currently. It's a, it's a UV light and peroxide combination treatment system to clear the 1-4 dioxide. And then it needs to then go through the current filtration system to clear the peroxide out of the water in order to be able to be consumed.
I thought that at first they were wary of this idea of using peroxide, that it didn't, wasn't safe enough, but now that's cleared now?
Well, the peroxide combined with the UV light, there's a chemical reaction that I guess destroys the 1-4 dioxide. But then the current filtration systems need to clear the peroxide out of the water to make that safe, so.
You know, we should really, one evening, before meeting, have the phone works with the water. He gave a lecture when we went on a, usually he's the king of the budget workshops, with a tour of the tarage. And when we got over to that section, he explained everything. It's absolutely complex and fancy and fantastically interesting. And he wants to do the, before this all happened also. So that we should really try to get him to come into a meeting and have a group, maybe a video presentation, and explain everything about the water. We've spent a great deal of money on water, we've seen it once, we've tried, we hold to a very high standard, and of course, a great deal of money. So it would be good if you knew exactly what was going on. And it's interesting and you would enjoy it. Try to set that up.
Hello, current filtration system. We'll take the peroxide out of the water.
Yes, it is here. We don't have to remove it. Well, not every well site, GAC granulated activated carbon, that removes the peroxide. Not all of our well sites have that. So as part of this program, not only adding this new system, we're also adding GAC filters.
Joe, just to clarify, it's a two-step process then? You have the ultraviolet light and the peroxide. And then the second step is to take the peroxide out and put it.
Correct.
Hey.
I just want to ask two questions. In terms of the water tower, that seems like it's a big amount of work. About the payment for the initial work, is that something else you guys tested part of the inspection? Or is it part of the initial assessment of the work?
It wasn't really part of the initial assessment. These were valves. When we, when we turned off the water for the tower, we discovered that, I guess, Marie Lane, the road adjacent to the tower, I guess, was built after the tower was built. So the valves actually turned the water off in Marie Lane, in addition to the water tower. So we need to do those valves inside Marie Lane in order to be able to just isolate the tower. So I guess maybe it wasn't this.
You don't anticipate any other?
I don't anticipate any other. I would think so, yeah.
And about the 1-4 dioxide, are we keeping track of the expenses that were incurred? Given that we're assuming the issue is.
Yes, yes, we are, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Wu.
Thank you. The one item I'll talk about is item number three, the amendment to the railroad parking detail. This was a suggestion to increase the rate to non-resident parking permits that are sold at Stewart Manor and Nassau Boulevard. There's about 87 permits that are sold to non-residents. And the suggestion is to increase the annual rate from $400 to $500 for.
And it includes railroad?
No, we only sell to non-residents at Stewart Manor. And the majority of them are at Stewart Manor. It's about 70 spots there and about 17 at Nassau Boulevard.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Rosy.
Hello. Testing, I press the button. Open again. Item number eight, as we called it the last meeting, I asked the board to remove the agenda item for the rest of the 18 to the bus. At that time, I had some questions that came up that afternoon while I had to begin to set regarding our decision on which end to choose. After consulting with Village Attorney P. D., previously contacted, maybe the homeholders, take a vendor, I feel very confident that this is the right brand to choose for this job. He gives proposal of a range of $8,000 to $12,000. That's because he made that proposal based on photographs. And so I added about $2,000 contingency here in case he discovers something that's certain. I want to remind the board that the project was originally in the $20,000 rate. So what will it be in the scope of the budget? I also want to thank Mr. Dolma, because this is the vendor he gave to me originally, and he sought out this work for the anniversary. And so, you know, we start making these decisions, who will prevail in wage, who will get the scope of the job. And when I was evaluating that, the first choice, prevailing wage item wasn't issued, but that's all cleared up, so this is the right way to go and support this tonight. Item number nine, as you know, we have, we have new phone system we put in a couple of years ago, voice alert IP phones. And the relationship with the old vendor is discontinued. And we've been flying bases, but I'll save you that these last few months since May. And last being, also had, we passed a new vendor with approval by the village attorney. That vendor was in Missouri. So I contacted the phone company that supplied the phones. And I said, they must have other vendors in the area, they basically 15 on Long Island. And it's one of those folks on government specifically, Mark Nathan, our IT guy. And I met with him last week, very, very happy. We also introduced him to the police commissioner, they support, Freeport Police Department, which is the one chief commissioner of Freeport, and enhanced itself. We're very confident in this relationship too, it's within budget. I just asked that the language we added on to the bottom says subject to final approval. On item number 22, according to the pool bathhouse, as you know, this work was completed prior to opening the pool on June 8th. However, out of all the change orders that were processed by this board, we only got the invoice sent from the contractor. There were two items on it, on review, that we found no support for by the board. They were given verbally. And so we caught them now, we're asking the board to retroactively approve these two change orders. Mrs. Wu and I checked the funding and it's in place, so it's really a mysterious act. Item number 23, this has to do with the same false conversation of a project that has been dormant since late May. We met with the contractor on the site last Tuesday with the architect, engineer. Mr. Di Francisco and Mrs. Giavellino, who's also architect, joined us. So we have a very full discussion. We made some field decisions, there are changes. Now we'll get those into design. I'm asking for this change order to support that. Once this change order is processed and we get it in design, it'll be given to the contractor, who will then price out the new materials, which is probably the same price as the old materials, and any additional work. And then I'll come back to support it in September or sooner with a change order. There's some additional funding out of this project. I don't know what the change order going on through, but this is the path to that. And finally, I'd like to mention something that was discussed during Mr. Di Francisco's presentation, who should be on vacation, but thank you for coming in, Joe. I want to point out that item number 29, that $48,000 digital bathroom water, this project started many years ago, $32,000 price pad, we raised $50,000, a few bucks to go, and then we had another $50,000 because we stayed high pricing on these bathrooms. This committed $48, basically $52,000 in capital on this area we spent. One of the reasons we're getting bids like this is because we went to EBIT late last year. We're advertising to the new state contracting order. We're getting dozens, not over 100 views on a lot of our contracts now. So we're getting a wider audience of people, more, yeah. So I want to just say it's probably attributed to the fact that more people say, oh, they're getting the contracts that we didn't see before. That's my.
Thank you very much.
Well, definitely the same call. What's the possibility that they will be finished and useful during the soccer season?
I'm not sure the exact date of the soccer season.
Well, I mean, it's not, for all purposes, it's a cost to pay for the labor there.
Okay, so, so if you approve this tonight, tonight, and I get it to, I get the contractor, the architect working on it tomorrow, I assume we'll have it designed by mid to late next week. The problem we have now is that next board meeting is on September 19th. So if I give the change order to the contractor and exceeds the budget, I have to wait for board approval, so.
I would suggest we suspend the rules and add to this item. Some dollar amount, 15, 20 grand, and if we just do it and get it done.
I, I, not knowing what the number would be, I'd suggest the higher number of the loan spent, what we need to spend. If you could suspend the rules, I can then initiate the contracting for it as soon as he has his plan in place. And I'll ask by the board to email so they double the.
I think we have to do everything we can to get that bathroom up in operation quickly.
It's a long process.
It's a long process. Suspend the rules and let some money in there.
Somebody will make more suspended rules with one of our speed class. To a man who's going down, I mean, down to the egg like that. Do they wait an hour or in a few minutes or? We're still going to do the other one, right?
We'll do it while we do the other one.
I have a couple of questions. About the, for the bus, does that not include the cement work? Or how will we handle that? That's just for the, the ones itself, right?
No, no, this is, this is a cleaning, it's a repair of the pedestal, and it's a, it's a testing of the, of the bus and the chemical, we do the chemical analysis of the bus so they know exactly how to treat it. So it's the tire structure. And we're also going to have advance, the parks department, which has been very active at the Rainbow Monument, we're going to bring them into, clear the bushes around, re-landscape as well as part of the project. So all these monuments that we're touching, we're trying to give them, make them also sturdy and new and proud and also to clean up their presentation.
In the proposal that I saw, it didn't include the cement work. So we're doing that separately or is that?
No, the pedestals should be in, the pedestals in there.
Well, then what did I saw was from January 17th. Is that still a good number now?
Yes, I originally contacted the vendor late last year. I asked him about updating his proposal. He just sent it when he had fire sent to him. So the 2,000 halls I added, it easily compensates that. And like I said, we, I budgeted 20, not knowing what the final number would be. So I don't think I'll have to come back to this board. I just, I just want caution to board though, this person's very busy. He told me that he probably would start a lot of thought was while he's putting it tonight. I expect it to be, it's late fall before he gets up.
In his proposal, he said it doesn't matter if it's different. So, coffee's to be moved.
I will, we talked about this on the phone, but I'll, I'll have, I'll straighten that out.
All right, number nine, the halls, is that, is that just this whole thing? Or is it also built on the hall?
No, it's, it's basically, it's for the infrastructure of the phone. So we have our digital phones, our voice alert IP phones, our devices on our handwork. So it's for helping us, and by the way, during the interview with the vendor, he actually commented on some configuration issues we're having, commissioners experiencing. He said, you're not configured right. So while the phones work, we're not getting optimal use out of the equipment because we're not configuring software and setup, so. And I won't get the details, but very significant things that haven't created a problem yet. But it's all the village phones, but mostly the infrastructure's here. So it comes in from the outside world and then we.
Close to garage.
It takes, everything, everything except the library, which is on their own path for voice alert IP.
Where does that stand, the library?
The library, when I met the vendor, I talked to him, I suggested, I talked to the director, Mary Ann Mallon, I suggested that, and in their search for new voice alert IP for this phone system, they start with the Mitel family because they're a reputable company, they're working here already. It'd be nice to have more relationship. Not that that should be the final choice, but they, I think they subsequently met as a separate occasion. But basically, why we met, we don't, and we can also, Mark Nathan, there's a lot of experience in this, it's been through a transitional rate, it was very helpful in discussions with their IT person. So I think, you know, they're on the path and I hope they choose Mitel. But it doesn't really matter what equipment they choose as long as they get it.
Questions or comments? Just as a note, I think it's kind of a shame, I think we all agree, there's kind of nothing in this village for Mrs. Stewart. I don't know what we're waiting for and what, because she was, as influential as he was probably, always was, so.
Is there room on the island for another one?
Never get a bus that's bigger than his. Anyways, we should seriously consider doing something. Secondly, we're almost done or are done with the new light fixtures on Seventh Street?
Yes, the Seventh Street, all the fixtures are installed. And the LED, we installed all the new LED fixtures on Seventh Street, and the next phase will be on Franklin.
And they actually have outlets on the fixtures?
Yes, every outlet now has, every fixture now has an outlet, yes.
I would suggest, I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but we should move the lights from the trees in our silly 49-cent Ace hardware, no disparaging Ace hardware, extension cords that run 12 feet over in the air, get them out of here and plug everything into the lights on the poles and just do the holes.
That was planned.
I've had conversations with Mr. Lincoln and I'm sure they'll be, they're replying to this.
And just so, you know, trustee Don, you talked to me about these, the outlets on the poles are tied to the same lights, the general lights on and off. If we plug anything in during the day, you won't be powered. plug anything in during the day, you won't be powerful until the lights go on.
Perfect.
You can't work around it with things, that's how this case...
They're high, they're near the head, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they're just below the, there's a box, they're covered.
That's a little warm. Well, number ten, so, I called over to Delphi a couple weeks ago to discuss the August Blackberry Annual Constitution, and it turns out that you really just required an email from me every year, like I send an email saying, requesting you basically, and the language we always use, which we discussed multiple times years ago, so it's really that simple, and it was here for two years.
So, I guess it's thanks to Andrew Delphi.
Thank you, Delphi.
I think Delphi also uses General Scout to host these things here, don't they?
Yes, there's a...
Twenty-five, twenty-four thousand.
There's a prize for each of our, which identifies all the students, come to our city, attend our city schools, boards, around, and that's, I'm part of that review committee with Delphi, and I think that's, that's a special, so thank you, I'd like to say that there as well, for your awards, how long?
Mayor, while I agree that we should thank Delphi, I also think it's time for us to relook at that twenty-five thousand dollar donation, and to see whether Delphi, or asking Delphi for just the fire department's use, or the fire department going to response time, and if Delphi probably eats up more than the twenty-five thousand, probably times two, so I think it's time for us to, not today or tomorrow, but next month or so, visit with them again, and point out to them the amount of resources that the city provides.
Anything else?
Okay, you got it, Mayor, are you on item number four? Trustees, Mayor, questions?
No, I'll do that first, yes?
Sure.
All right, I'll do it. I had to ask Joe to give a little presentation of the projects in the village, maybe this would be a good time, Joe, give us an update.
I was gonna say, unless our...
I just want to say you better look, I'm just totally different. Why, in three trips, hardly, he, he stays here tonight, it's more... Just get Joe with it.
It's light, this light...
It's on, it's on, it's better, it's on.
Yeah, it's your old, running on the wheel, and...
Run ham's still on.
Yeah.
Wow, it's a little light, so...
It's early, it's early, don't clutch it.
So, we are, we are in the midst of paving season, we have completed paving Eleventh Street north of Cherry Valley to Corret, we have completed the concrete work at the Rainbow Memorial, we also completed the concrete sidewalk replacement on Little Seventh Street, and we recently completed paving the Clinton parking field, and this is the parking field up on the corner of Old Country and Clinton, this is just what the process looks like, we improved the lighting in the area, we've added lighting, show you how it looks when we paved it, how thick the asphalt is, this was a complete reconstruction, we did the base, we did all the drainage, and there's the finished product, there's some of the new light fixtures being installed, so, we are currently in the midst of paving Park Street, as the water main project was just completed over there, so that's the next up in the paving schedule this, this year. Stewart Field Parking Field, this is the area north of Stewart Field, we recently did some removal, brush removal over there, enough so to allow the engineering department to do some surveying work, in order to determine if we were to put some parking up there, what the project's going to look like, and this is part of the process of getting a lease, I believe, with the county, so this is just showing you some of the areas that were cleared. The water tower, obviously the water tower is now down, we are in a, in a holding pattern right now, until we, the next step will be pouring the base, and pouring the concrete foundation for the new tower, this is just some shots of the tower coming down, this was the jackhammer used to break up the concrete base that was in place, there was a significant amount of concrete holding the old tower up, that'll need to be cleared, there's some examples of it there, this is what the site looks like now, we're ready to move forward, the DC is still reviewing the soil sampling plant, the soil sampling results from the area that we're done, and once we get the go-ahead from them, the next step will be to start pouring the foundation for the new tower, hopefully within the next few weeks. Well, on rehab, I mentioned that on tonight's agenda, need some additional funding, give an idea of some of the valve work and main replacement that needs to be done at the site, this is some of the old equipment that was removed, this is below grade where some of the workers were installing the new pump that I had asked for on tonight's agenda, that's the old pump that failed, and that's the new pump that's replacing, that was being installed. Recently, we completed generator installations in a number of places around the village, this is the new generator that was installed down at the yard, DWD Yard, this is a diesel generator, and this will supply power to the entire complex in the event of any type of power failure, with hurricane season coming up, I'm happy to have this in place. This is the new generator that was installed at the senior center, this is a natural gas generator, and the senior center now has full generator backup, in case of any power loss. And last one, this is the diesel generator that was installed at station three, off of Clinton Road, the station actually did not have backup power, and now has full backup power, that I believe is started up is this week, yes, so, tomorrow, yes. So, these are three generators, these are three capital projects that are all completed. Skater System is another capital project in the water department I've spoken about in the past, the Skater System is the brains of the water department, it's a complete overhaul and upgrade of a computer system that runs the water system, this is just a brief look at what the cabinet looks like, the circuitry, we've gone from, from this to this.
It's like you're calling in via set, you know, it's like a second...
That's it. This is some of the new circuitry, circuit boards, that's basically it, that's the system that runs the water department right there in front of you, it doesn't look like much, but it's very important, that's basically a map of the entire water system on one screen, confusing, that's one well site, just to give you an idea of what you're looking at, that's wells thirteen and fourteen, it shows the wells itself, the filtration system, the storage tank, flow rates, so it's, it's a, it's a much improved system than we had in the past. In addition to upgrading the controls at the water sites, we've also updated the controls at our sewer stations, last year we upgraded the controls at Hilton Park, this year we are updating the controls at Meadow Street, this is just the worker installing the system, this is the new system in place, there's a screen there on the left, which I have a close-up of, basically the same as the Skater System water, only this time it's for this, the, this is a picture of the Seavalley pump station, at the time I took the picture, Meadow wasn't complete yet, Meadow is complete now, but this basically shows the pumps, how they're working, making sure that the sewer is still flowing, that there's no issues, the system has alarms on it, that alerts us to any, any issues, but it's a, again, it's a much more high-tech system, not as manual, and much, a big improvement. Trustee Don, you spoke about this earlier, phase one of the three, last three phases to replace all of the remaining street light in the village that is not LED, to convert it to LED, Seventh Street was the first phase, this is one of the new lights that were installed, this is the same light at night, if you look at the bottom, you'll see a little box at the bottom, that's the outlet, it's a cover on it, so every one of these lights will have an outlet on it, every one of these lights does have an outlet, and this is just some schemes of Seventh Street at night, I think it looks pretty nice, that's across from next to the library. Lastly, the street department has been busy this summer addressing areas of concern around the village, where we've had drainage issues, this is on Bayberry, where we installed a new catch basin, in order to address any issues that are there, we try to address the areas of concern when we have the opportunity, Bayberry's one of those areas, there's the finished product, once they were done, that's what it looks like underground, that's what it looks like above ground. Community Park, we always had an issue behind Field One, the dugout there, there was always a pooling issue there, the street crew put in a basin behind the dugout there, I think that resolved that issue. Chester and Wellington is another area, we installed catch basin, and Jefferson and Amherst, another area where we've had some flooding issues. You can see some of the work that goes into there, these basins are pretty deep in the ground, requires a lot of concrete work, some manual labor, obviously, but the street department takes care of these all summer long. That's it.
Thank you, Joe, I think this was, I mean, you guys have done a lot of work, you're making improvements all over the place, it really is going to...
Thank you.
I'd like to also advise the board, when I got here in fourteen, March fourteen, the sewer pump situation, we had one new pump, and five that need replacement, now we have five new pumps, and one that's been placed in a pre-added schedule, so it's a very good, good structure, we have a lot more confidence now in our control of the pumps themselves.
I think it's important that we share that information on regular basis with the community, so that they understand where the textile is going, we really are in such good shape, and chose a good infrastructure, and things have not been done, I got here in 2014, and things have not been done over a long time in many areas, and now we have caught up, and it's, it's a very good feeling, it's important, very, very important.
With that being said, this presentation should be on our website?
Yes, it should, yeah.
Narrative on...
Mr. Francisco, back from Long Island.
Good, Ms. Mayor, just since Joe mentioned it, on the Stewart Field lease, council and I called with Nassau County today, we think we can resolve everything, and hopefully that lease will be done in the next week or two, it will then lead its way through the county legislature, but hopefully the next two months we'll have it done, we need to give them some specs on the little retaining wall in the building.
That's, that's actually part of the language of the lease, that final approval by Nassau County, so we gave initial design, like a first eye view, now we have more information to structure more, a concise representation.
And how many spots are there total?
End zone, well, we end the building, somewhere between twenty-five and forty-five.
And not only that, there's a piece of the medieval parkway there, and the county agreed to put up, information was...
We're doing it, we're doing it.
Oh, we're doing it, as long as, as long as we're doing it, so then...
Everything is at our cost, so we estimate two, three hundred thousand dollars.
That was, those fields were really limited in terms of parking spaces, so we feel good about that.
Yes, I actually received the final, first draft yesterday, I haven't had a chance to review it, but I did receive the draft from the architect, I mean, I'm sorry, the engineering department yesterday.
Okay, are there any questions or comments by trustees?
Madam Mayor, at this time, if you want to do the handoffs?
Yes.
All right, so, Madam Mayor, do I have a motion to suspend the rules of the board trustees to add two items to the consent agenda?
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so then, do I have a motion to add as item number thirty-four, an extension to the consulting agreement for Paul Blake for an additional thirty days through October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen? Seconded, trustee Delaney, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. And then, another vote, motion to add as item number twenty-three D, as David, an increase of, I think, I'm doing one of them a little bit high. Of, an increase of twenty thousand dollars to the total budget for the St. Paul's Comfort Station project, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Very well, those items are now on the consent agenda.
At this time, we will have citizens' comments on agenda items only, please raise your hand if you'd like to come up to the microphone. Yes.
Steve Ardi, Meadow Street, item sixteen, I don't think anyone discussed that, the force seems a little bit high than the other trips, can we just give a little information on what that trip is about?
Mr. Wade?
This is attendance for two employees at the National Recreation Parks Association Congress for Parks being held in Baltimore in September, the cost is approximately seven hundred dollars for tuition and associated hotel and boarding costs, this is a once-a-year event, it does not occur on the East Coast very often, it hasn't been on the East Coast since Baltimore about nine years ago, and we really felt like we wanted to take advantage of getting two of our younger employees out there, let them take advantage of the three-hundred-plus educational sessions that are being held, and the cost is approximately twenty-six-hundred for the two people.
Thank you. In that case, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July eighteen, twenty-nineteen Trustee MacRino's a second, trustee, trustee Delaney, all those in favor? Aye, that appears unanimously. Do I have a motion, then, to approve the consent calendar? Trustee Hare, a second?
First, I'd like to see my item approved, I have a calendar.
A, a pardon?
I'd like items removed from the consent calendar.
Right. So, we're not approving that yet?
You're asking for approval for consent. I'd like items thirteen, fourteen, removed from the consent calendar.
Do you want to speak to that?
I just intend to vote against them.
All right, so, so...
So, what we do is, make a motion to remove thirteen, fourteen, consent agenda, trustee Delaney, you just made that motion, it's going to be seconded, all vote aye, so, trustee Delaney made that motion?
Yes.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, may I vote?
Right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, at this point, you can make a motion to adopt the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Yes, we'll take it up as consent now.
Yeah, so, then we'll go back, and then we'll go back, sorry. So, there's a motion, is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda? On the, the next, or if there's a second?
Trustee Foley?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we can... So now we can discuss item number thirteen. And fourteen. And fourteen. Those are all the comments. Madam Mayor, do you entertain any comments or conversations concerning item number thirteen?
Yes. Well, then you want to do that?
I'll comment. I ask that they be removed. I don't intend to vote for them. I, I'd like, I'd like to make a statement about that. I'd like to frame the issues for everybody. Again, it's my opinion, it's everyone's type of opinion. Basically, we have a request to promote, promote a person to lieutenant position and also promote one person to a sergeant position and hire a new officer. Residents complain about many things. Some justified and many were not justified were not based on facts. But relevant to this discussion, two issues we hear often are about taxes and the lack of visible police presence on the street and the neighborhoods and on patrol. We hear from residents all the time, why aren't police in the neighborhoods? Why they always park behind some building or in some parking lot? Why they're in and out on the street stopping speeding? Why they're in and out on the street at night determining or catching people from rank to cars or driveways? Why are highly compensated police officers in parking lots writing tickets instead of parking ticket agents who are at much lower cost than skill set? Respect the taxes. Police department budget accounts for approximately eighteen percent of our budget. That's your tax dollars. That's practically twelve million dollars a year and ever increasing. Doesn't include costs associated with free healthcare for life and pension costs and payments on retirement. And as an aside, residents, we're all to blame here. Don't complain about taxes unless you're willing to address the level and the costs of providing services. Stop calling police but non-police matters. And this topic of promotions and command structure in department organization needs to be part of that conversation. I've been on the board for over eleven years. I see the same reiterating problems over and over. Some of these problems are tied directly to the department and management of the department. And some are reflective of the municipal employee system at large and some are the fault of the board of trustees. We have systematic and recurring issues with overtime. For pretty much eleven years I've been on the board, except perhaps two years when the then board reinstated by overtime. The dollar budget, overtime is constant and in my opinion, management of the department is either unmingling or unable to change the system or processes or manage itself to address this issue. That dollar amount is approximately eight to nine hundred thousand dollars a year. And in those two years, with budget overtime strum, in fact, the actual spend matched the eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. We're willing to work together with the department on this issue. We should not be boxing ourselves into a structure at this time. Clearly doesn't work to address the two fundamental issues I mentioned earlier. There's no contractual requirement to have X number of lieutenants and Y number of sergeants. This has nothing to do with work schedules. Department hasn't changed its work schedule in over four years. I see nothing and it hurt nothing that management of the department intends to do so. Having these additional promotions does nothing to put more officers on the street. It does nothing to put more officers in the neighborhoods. It does nothing to address the constant level of overtime. We hear over and over that these are contractual problems. Our labor council has attested. That's only partly true. So has our village treasurer and so has our village auditor. It's only partly true. We retain a consultant to review this department. We sought this review primarily for issues I noted, budget and heat on the street. The consultant is a nationally recognized consultant. It has not finished its work. Hopefully, its work will be completed in the next month and will report its findings and make recommendations to us. They did make some initial observations. Two comments they made stand out and are extremely relevant to this discussion. First, with the department setup, the hierarchy for creation and maintenance of separate groups of the department is outdated. Initial commentary by the consultant specifically questioned the utilization and duties of lieutenants in particular. But here we are, being asked to promote someone into that position. Second, the lack of data being created and maintained at by the department, including data relative to scheduled calls, types of calls, made any deep analysis be possible. Consultant expressed to us that the manner and format in which the department captures, documents, maintains data prevents several challenges to them. As a result, its customary recommendations, which normally would include staffing models, will not be proper. Because of that lack of that data, we as a board decided to have the consultant wait to deliver its report until better and more data was collected. Better and more data has now been collected. Consultant should be able to deliver report in the next few weeks. The report is supposed to contain recommendations regarding several things, including manpower, the deployment of manpower, the force makeup in terms of the chain of command and many other issues. Why are we now considering these promotions? I don't think the timing is correct. Not a timing issue in terms of contract, but before the manpower, persons to be promoted are from within the department. There's no learning curve required. One person leaving will not leave until October first. He couldn't pull his papers. And then what? We have extra lieutenants. We have no contractual requirement that any work scheduled be done by this month or next month. That's not in the contract. Police contract is expiring next June first. Why are we boxing ourselves in now to a command and cost structure? A question that labor council raised once again and advised us not to undertake any changes until we get closer to making determinations on the police contract. I don't understand why they ignored his advice. Again, these promotions don't result in more officers on the street or in the neighborhoods or have any substance in relative relevance to overtime or budget. It's just, this is the way it's been done for forty-five years, so it must be correct. And services and the way we provide them stay the same, while costs escalate and taxes rise. Is that the Garden City way? Is that the heritage we're trying to preserve? So I will vote against these items. And not against them, I don't think it's properly this time to be considered.
Other trustee comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Trustee Dorni is correct. We have our own opinion, so I'll express mine. These men and women who serve in our police department put their lives on the line for our village every day. Let me repeat that. They put their lives on the line for their village every day. In the world that we live in, when you sit there and you stop at a traffic stop, or you have a truck that's out of control, or any type of crazy situation, every day they do this. We have to be fiscally responsible as trustees to our residents. But I am not about to change the structure of our police force, one that is considered to be one of the best in the country, waiting for a consultant's report that we may or may not follow in part or in whole without a discussion and without an evaluation. These promotions are being recommended by our police commissioner, who has over thirty years of experience. I've probably known him for most of them. To me, in my mind, this is idiotic for any of us who lack the knowledge or experience to recommend how one of the finest police forces in the country should be restructuring. That is the reason why we're ranked thirteenth in the country. It is not because we do not, it is because we do not do what all the other two hundred police forces that this consultant covers does. I will vote for the promotions and I boldly support this.
Any comments by trustees?
These promotions are to maintain the level of police supervision out there right now, correct?
Yes, upon whose time, on any time.
We're ranked thirteenth in the country as being one of the safest villages, was right, under this supervision and under your leadership. I would oppose right as well.
You know, I'd like to comment and say that Garden City is a safe village. We have at least six or seven county roads, arteries that run through our village north to south. They go, some of them go all the way up to Long Island Expressway. Their name won't change, but it's the exact same route. And down to the sunrise highway. We constantly, the police constantly pull over people who are DUI, DWI, under the influence of narcotics, have narcotics on them. Their cars are not, have broken lights, no license plates. When they bring these people out, sometimes other things might manifest themselves and they have to be brought in. To say, I know that people ride through the village and say, well, what is that cop doing up there on the, in the parking lot of the senior center? You don't know what he's doing. You don't know that, what is, how his time, time flows on his day. It would be impossible to maintain the safety of this village as described by trustee Dorni if we did not have a good job being done by many, if not all, of our police. I'm satisfied with the fact that our village is safe. You can walk the streets. We deal with all of the strangers that flood into our village every single day, breaking our traffic rules, violating other rules of the village. Lord &amp; Taylor has plenty of shoplifting. We control that. We react on that right away. It just goes on and on. There have been, the detective squad is extraordinary, absolutely extraordinary. The time at Christmas about four or five years ago, one, a person broke into a home on Third Street, brought the family down into the room with the burners, tied them up, shot into the ceiling to frighten them to death. Our detectives caught that guy within two days. When we recently had graffiti on St. Paul's School, I went to Commissioner Jackson with it. He found those two people, two twenty-year-old males from Islip Terrace and West Islip, in about two and a half days. The, the time that credit cards were being stolen out of envelopes in the Garden City post office. Detective Madden figured it out that it was someone inside the post office and that person was apprehended. He, he worked with the New York City police, and he has a county police, to catch a sexual criminal. This business of people saying, I think, I don't know what those police are doing. They're just sitting there cooping. That is not reality and that is not the truth. I'm sorry, it might look like that to you, but we have, they are on duty. I think the last report we got for a full week in the recent past, I think it had thirty-four or fifty, um, P, tickets given out. Now, if you take the number of police we have and divide it by that number, that's a policeman, each policeman, and I'm just doing a, a grandiose analysis, that they must at least give four summonses a day, if not more. These ideas that a consultant comes in, we don't really know the caliber, cal, quality of that consultant. At the end of the, of the experience, we asked them, could we have recommendations or, uh, from other communities that they had served around here also? And they couldn't give us any. They said they had Long Beach, but that's the city. You know, the whole thing, when you, you have to really examine and think through what is going on. It is a safe village. We all want you to tell us if you don't feel that that is true. We have a fine police group. They are excellent men. I, accompanied Commissioner Jackson to, what was that ceremony called? It was when they, they first get, what was that ceremony you mentioned?
The graduation.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, the gradu, graduation. All of the distinguished commissioners from Long Island came over to speak to Commissioner Jackson. He is highly regarded by the other police commissioners on this island. They have a very close relationship and they admire him. It was easy to tell that. So I'm tired of listening to this nonsense of working everything else out by money and telling us where we're going wrong. You tell us we are, we are going wrong, if you think we are, or do you enjoy living in one of the safest communities on Long Island? And not only that, nationally, it was named the safest, uh, in a study for safe communities. Our police department was raised ranked thirteenth in the country. So you'll forgive me if I'm a little bit short on this, but I'm tired of listening to it and then watching a fine job being done. Do we have a cause at time, from time to time, to complain about the police on some petty, or some small issue? Yes, we do. We want you to come forward with it. We want to know what you think of them. We live strategically in a different, difficult place. Tremendous influx of traffic go through our village and they're strangers, most of them. Please don't tell me that this is not a safe community. And that Inspector Mike Doyle, who was Commissioner Jackson's assistant, has retired. He's not coming back. He retired beautifully, by the way. The commissioner has to have someone in the style of an administrative assistant or a deputy. That's necessary and it's necessary now. Not to wait till some consulting fellow comes in and tells us what they think. Then if his, uh, that person, that slot he left is open, that slot has to be filled. These are practical realities. I'm tired of listening to comments, majority of comments about the police when we have one of the best police groups and will have it easily and no room in the country. Look, understand what you're looking at. You live in a safe community. People are dying to get in. Any other comments from...
Mayor, I'll also make a comment. I think I probably have, I probably have about thirty years more enforcement experience as well. That's my background. The last two years I've been on the board of police commissioners working with Commissioner Jackson and looking at the police department. I don't see, I don't see anything that stands out that, that needs to be corrected. Police supervision is a necessary thing. Cops are supervised by sergeants. Sergeants are supervised by lieutenants. And he needs a commanding officer to run the show. His lieutenants work as, as basically the tomb commanders. They're in charge for the shift and they're in charge of all police operations for the toilet they're working. That's a necessary thing to have here at headquarters. These promotions are necessary additions, both for, I, I'm concerned.
Trustee Foley?
Thank you. I, I don't think examining what the cost of this is and looking at hierarchy and structure that's been in place for many, many, many years necessarily equates to saying that the police department isn't doing their job. I understand that they have a difficult job. They do it every day and that is the expectation of working here. And I, I do appreciate that you are working here, but you come to work, you get paid. This is the job that you're doing. And I think it is part of our responsibility to look at what the cost of something is versus keeping the benefit here too. So I don't want to end up like Long Beach. Two of these retirements are costing close to seven hundred thousand dollars and that's just the payouts. I don't want to become a place that can't afford the police department anymore. It's already eighteen percent of the budget and it may grow further. But we had budget conversations. We've had police officers and saw no reduction in overtime for five consistent years. So one of my questions is, we hired a consultant and it's news to me that we don't think the, the person is a good consultant because then it begs the question of why did we hire him to begin with? And his problem was he couldn't get the information and accurate information the way it was being reported in the police department, so we gave him more time. So what is the status of the report and when will that report be delivered? Because maybe it's prudent to wait for the report. That doesn't mean you're not going to have the promotions. It means it might be beneficial to wait four weeks for the report to come in. And since it's not contractual when these happen, why wouldn't we wait for an analysis to come in when we're talking about the amount of money that we are for the benefit that we want? We want to bang for a buck. There is no department that we have reviewed, and I've heard from many other trustees, how each department had a systematic analysis when changes were made. So why would the police be any different? This sensitivity to the nature of their job. But to just say we're going to do it because we always have when we have a pending report, and that's a key factor here. There's a pending analysis. If we say we don't want the analysis in four weeks, then we're not the people. If we say we have open conversations, then, then we can have it done. But to say that the structure should stay the same for ten years just because everybody has experience in it, apparently except for me, I'm asking, why will we wait for the analysis? Because the initial report had other, other comments in it that were of concern. So I would like to wait for the report, see the data, hear the presentation before any major change is approved at this point, given the amount of money, so I can continue to be in a town where the police department is thirteenth or, or higher in the country. So I'm not in a position facing playoffs. I'm not in a position like Long Beach where you had a load of bond just to do the health payouts. So I would like to know when the report is coming and if we can wait till that time.
Any other comments from trustees?
Well, I'd like to know when the report is coming.
I hear Deputy Mayor Foley with his speech.
Okay.
Can I get an answer to my question first? Can I like to...
Do we have an idea, Commissioner, when the report is...
Just what? Okay, so just to bring it up to date, the second phase of the report analyzed in the computer via dispatch information. The budget here, due first, they were on site within a week or so. They have all the data given to them. They deliver the report to Bill's attorney approximately July 30th. Questions and comments have been forwarded to them. Right now, the commissioner has received a copy of the draft so that he can comment on anything he wishes to. Once they receive that in writing, they will put out a final draft for the boards review. Depending on the turnaround of the commissioner, that can take anywhere from a few days to a week or so. After that, I expect something by the end of early September.
So before the next meeting?
It should, depending on the turnaround.
It's the plan. So what's... Why can't we push this to the next meeting to get the report?
Yeah, I'd like to know. I think that you bring up valid points, but I don't agree. I've been a trustee now for six and a half years, and I remember years ago, we only had forty-five offices. Today, we have fifty-three. And the reason for it is, if anybody's on the Facebook page, I think we probably have seen about six hundred and twenty videos of all the people who would have been all night trying to get into people's cars and taking stuff out of the car. And all the speeding that you hear that happens all throughout the village on Stewart Avenue, and all the other things that goes on. And one of the things that the boards made the decision over the years is that the residents' concern of safety was a high priority. That's one of the reasons today we have fifty-three instead of forty-five. By the way, when we had forty-five, four were on disability. Spiritually, we have forty-one. I also have seen the articles of Long Beach. I'm sure if I could get... It's always in my mind when I saw that three offices retired from Happyville years ago, and they had to float a bond for over a million dollars in order to pay for the retirement. But again, one of the things we did as a village is when I started six and a half years ago, and John Rogers was the mayor, we had a mantra. And the mantra that we had was, look at the village while it's a business. So today, it's a sixty-three and a half million dollar business. And what we did was, is that we looked at all the different deficiencies. And one of the reasons that we don't have to float bonds is because Mrs. Ivey Wu was sitting at that table. And one of the things that she made very clear is that unlike Happyville, unlike Long Beach, unlike most places that are totally unprepared, what we did over the years was that we increased significantly our reserves, my breakfast tool. And what ends up happening is that every single year, not only are we prepared if and even several people retire unexpectedly, but we have enough reserves that are protected in every year and every budget we set aside. Because why do we project? Because Mrs. Wu coordinates now retirements with all department heads, especially with the police, with their contracts for the retirements that they get. So the bottom line is that, again, we look at this as a whole picture. Now, I have no doubt that the police department and Ralph, and you've been correcting from Long Island, the police department's budget is somewhere between eight to ten million dollars per person. Okay. Assuming it is, I'm not saying that any department that's outside is twelve, okay? Let's say it's twelve. Does Mike figure that this wants to mean what the number is? If it's twelve million dollars, the bottom line is that there's no department that can't work more efficiently. There's no department that can sit there and can't improve, just like the village. That's one of the reasons why over the years, sometimes people, including my wife, sometimes says, "Oh, please, you know, you hire another consultant." The bottom line is that when it does settle, they will work their way to the goal. So my feeling is, again, just my opinion, is that I look at the structure of the police department, and to me, what I care about is that we continue to function because regardless of what that consultant's report is, regardless of how he sits there and counts numbers and tells me the cost, I sit there and I have to balance between the value of service that the residents in this village are providing and what the cost is. And in my six and a half years, I have yet to have one resident come up to me and say, "Can you do me a favor? I'd rather have less police protection. Can you do me a favor? I want you to really crunch down the budget and make sure that you cut down on the amount of protection that we have in the village in order to make the budget work." I've not had that resident come up to me yet. So again, I respect people's opinion, but that's the way I look at it. I don't think the ask is to do this in the office. The ask is just to convert the promotions.
Can't hear.
The other part of that is, in that report, nowhere did it say we had too many police officers, okay? Or there were an overabundance of supervision. We're trying to maintain what we have going forward. It didn't say that we had too many. Their problem was with the quality of the data that they got. It was handwritten. It was not computerized. Now it's computerized, we have more data. If anything, the police have responded to more calls or accounting for those calls a lot better, and those numbers are higher. So why should we stop a level of supervision for the police, level of police officers on the street when the numbers are high? It doesn't make sense to me. I think we need to keep these numbers the same. I think supervision needs to be there. Their recommendation was to move lieutenant out of the station house, out of the headquarters. I think personally, a lieutenant had to run the operation from headquarters. Easily, that is in charge. Again, cops report to sergeants, sergeants report to lieutenants. A lieutenant is in charge for the whole shift for the time he's working. So the sergeants also report to him. There's no reason why you should not make these promotions.
But the retirement isn't going to happen until the end of September, beginning of October, and the new recruit isn't going to be available to us for several months. So waiting for the data to come in till the next meeting, which is September nineteenth? I'm not saying we should reduce it. I want to see what the information is before we agree to it. So it seems like the timeline could defer this for a few weeks until the report came in, because we're not going to be working short. The force is going to be maintained. The guy's not leaving till the beginning of October, beginning of October.
The idea is to get him in an academy or for...
Well, that's going to be, according to this motion, September, spring 2020. And waiting three weeks won't change that.
No, that's not the case. It is in September, October.
Then if we wait till the nineteenth, that's not going to change. We can hire somebody.
Commissioner Jackson, isn't there also contractual obligations and scheduling that you have to be...
Well, when you apply for a listing, you have to do the interview process to get someone in. So you may not have enough time to get someone in. That's one of the issues. Also, the contractual is the September first, the...
September first.
To go over it. Excuse me, excuse me. That is not accurate. Please don't say that it's contractual. That is not accurate at all. No one is issued a fine for it, but it's not contractual, okay? I'm aware, I can read, and I've also consulted with our labor council. It is not contractual. Please don't say that and don't refer it. It's not true. And secondly, we didn't hire the consultant to cut police. That's not true. We hired them to look at the...
I...
You did say that.
No, I didn't.
Okay. We hired a consultant to look at efficiencies and how we can do things better, okay? So let's be accurate, because the newspaper is going to say, "Oh, people, we hired consultants to have less police." That is not what we did at all. Let's just vote.
What I'm saying is there was nothing in there to lower our amount of police. That's all I said.
What the initial comments said were, "We don't have enough people to make any of our normal recommendations." That's what it said. So I suggest let's just vote. Is there a motion on the table?
Okay.
Okay, can I make a motion to...
Make a motion to approve item thirteen?
Item thirteen?
Uh, no. We have to do it separately.
Okay.
Item thirteen, your motion?
Item thirteen.
I'll say.
Okay, it's all in favor.
All in favor. Those opposed? Let the rec. collect. Two trustees voted no. Motion carries. Now, is there a second motion to approve item number fourteen? Okay, there's a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Three trustees voted no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor. Please drop the item number eight on the calendar.
All right. At this time, it is going to be a trustee's work session, which will be a presentation of parking study in our village by BFJ as requested by the planning commission. And this will discuss zoning requirements for parking.
Good evening, and I'm Mayor, trustees. My name is George Jacques, BFJ Planning, the principal BFJ planning for parking and transportation. This particular memorandum that we're discussing tonight, I think you all have a copy of it. It... This effort started in, or 2012, to basically review the current parking regulations, primarily in the downtown district where we have a downtown parking district. The original impetus for the effort came from the administration in 2012 that basically stated that there's a revelation today in the downtown district that says when they have an application for redevelopment or change in development, that the applicant has to demonstrate that there is sufficient parking within a three-hundred-foot radius from that particular building. And at that time, we were asked to review that to see if that makes sense or if we should advise on some changes. And it kind of went from planning commission meeting to planning commission meeting and dragged on for a number of years. And so that's basically the backdrop to this memorandum that you have. An additional copy, if you're interested, I have additional copies of the memorandum.
I don't have that. You have that on screen?
Yeah.
Yep. It was...
To see that it's a strange... They pulled the document in years ago.
It was from 2016.
And here are additional copies. There's different dates on this, but it's basically the same memorandum. They have... Grand City. Grand City, look, the Grand City. And you see the word documents. Okay, have you checked on it again?
Is it the second one?
The second one, yeah. The word documents. Yeah. So this basically summarizes the memorandum. As we went along and discussed the various regulations for the downtown parking district, and I think that there is a map of that in the memorandum. The planning commission asked us to look at all the other planning regulations in the village and to see to what degree these regulations date back to many, many years, whether they need to be updated, changed, simplified. This shows, there you can see the district that we're talking about. So it's basically the whole business area along Franklin with the parking lots. And just, I imagine you all know, originally, when this was planned many, many years ago, it was planned with the idea that the development that's allowed in this particular district, escrow zoning, would have enough parking. And that's how the parking lots were designed many, many years ago. So when an applicant came in to apply for change in development, they had to submit a study that said that there was enough parking within the three-hundred-foot radius from that building. And every application that was submitted found that there was enough parking. Even though we know there are some lots where we have shortages, like Lot Seven South, if you look at the three-hundred-foot radius, there was always adequate parking. So we felt that based on the past history and based on the fact that originally this area was planned, the amount of development that's allowed escrow zoning was planned in such a way that there would be enough parking. And the studies that have been done, as you may know, there was a study, a very detailed parking occupancy study in 2000, I think it was 2004, and there was one done last year. They always found that there is vacant parking, at least in some areas, especially on the east side of Franklin, there's always vacant parking. So we felt it was easier, simpler to just eliminate that particular parking requirement in the downtown district because it was just a lot of effort and never led to any changes or any denial of any application. So that's one key recommendation that we make, basically to streamline the development process. Obviously, that doesn't mean that anyone can come in and help anything. You still have fairly strict zoning regulations that control what you can do and what you cannot do. But we felt that this parking requirement that you had within a three-hundred-foot radius was really needed. And it was shown in the past that it truly didn't make a difference. It didn't change any of the applications that you had. So that was a key recommendation. But as to request of the planning board at that time, we also look at other regulations. And basically, the idea is to try to make parking as efficient as possible because it is, you know, obviously, it's always an important element. Everybody feels that parking is critical. Sometimes people complain that there's not enough parking because they cannot park immediately close to where they want to go. But at the same time, we have to realize, if you look at that photo, there's a lot of land dedicated to parking. In a way, that's land that doesn't bring any tax revenues. That's land that doesn't help the key functions of the village. So we have to manage it efficiently. And so we also recommend that other regulations that the village could implement outside of this district to make sure that parking is efficient, that we don't have too much parking, and that we manage it in an efficient way. Some of those areas, some of the regulations that we suggest also is what's called shared parking. That means that if you have different uses on the same lot or on an adjacent lot, and if you have a use that where the parking picks, let's say at night or on a Saturday, and you have a use where parking picks on a weekday, that you can have one parking lot that satisfies both of those, and you get a much more efficient use. So a lot of municipalities are adopting these kinds of regulations. So we suggest that these are kind of state-of-the-art and outdated regulations for you to consider. So they are summarized in the memorandum. We also went through the detailed parking regulations, the zoning requirements for the different uses. Some of them are so antiquated a little bit, and we could not find anything to substantiate those. So we basically, on the page three of the memorandum, give you a list of potential changes, in a way simplifying it, and in some cases, changing regulations to reflect the recent data that we have from these various parking requirements. So that's on page three, adjusted village parking ratios. And then we talked about shared parking. And that's something, shared parking, it's difficult to, you know, give a fixed percentage of. What we're saying is, if you have different uses, it's very difficult to tell... What we're saying is, if you have different uses, it's very difficult to tell what the credit would be from shared parking. Depending on the different uses, depending on the amount of different uses, the credit can be 2%, the credit can be 10%, the credit can be 25%. So those are detailed recommendations that we made. As you can see, this goes back to 2016, 2017, and the village has not acted on it at that time. And we realize these are complicated ratios, and you may not be able to decide tonight. I don't know if you have questions, I'll be happy to go through them. There's obviously, you know, a lot of work that went into these different ratios and the ideas that are behind it. I'll be happy to explain in more detail.
Just got it now, so I don't know. I'm certainly not ready to go if you go ahead.
No, it's very detailed, I think we need to digest it.
I mean, I, I think maybe what will help people understand is why we started this. It literally started with Usbendikaleros, Sushiya. Okay? So when they came into the village, they wanted to have a restaurant there, they had to go to zoning and get a waiver over 300-foot, even though there's a monumentally large parking lot there. It's just that people don't want to walk from this area. But we have plenty of parking in lots of places, but we had these integrated pools. That was kind of how it started. We had to take the walk, it didn't take a while sometimes, then just rush through. So that's kind of what we, that was the original focus on why we went through that.
So that particular regulation for the downtown district of the 300, it was on the books, but it didn't really serve a purpose. Because you do have, you know, again, you have zoning regulations that really control what you can do and what you cannot do. Nobody's proposing to change those. It's just this, you know, I would call it a silly regulation that didn't make a difference and it just complicated the process. So that's the key, one of the key recommendations. The other ones are more, you know, technical when it comes to parking regulations, like shared parking, allowing off-site parking. Because sometimes you have, you may have, and this, when I talk about shared parking, off-site parking, that's on the outside of the district. You know, where sometimes you may have a use on one lot and the adjacent lot has plenty of room, and you can allow, you know, through the easement, the use of off-site parking. It's to the advantage, I think, of everyone, including the village, to minimize the amount of parking, you know. And many, many times, we have parking, we have parking lots that's full at night, it's empty during the day, and the next door you have parking lots that's full during the day and empty at night. That's the kind of efficiencies that we try to improve. Because more, the more parking you have, the more problems you have with climate and heat and water storm control and flooding and so on. So it is to everyone's advantage to manage the parking resource as efficiently as we can.
I think you can read it. It's very detailed. It's a textbook report, but I have, they, maybe what we, as part of your study, did anybody approach you when they were in Chamber about 7S and putting a multi-lane parking there?
Sorry, I have to, yeah. This, this year, you know, we did two separate studies. This year's an effort that was started in 2012 that was just to look at the regulations.
I'm sure.
Yeah. We did the separate studies, some of you may be aware, where we did a very detailed occupancy study of all the lots, including 7S, I don't know, and the street parking truck. And I made a presentation here, I think it was last year, although we were here, where we had made clear recommendations for 7S, for street parking. And I, I remember, you know, Chamber was commenting on it, they disagreed with one of our regulations. You know, we recommended that, you know, before you build a deck on 7S, that you should manage your parking and control it better to create turnover. Because there are a lot of people that park for two hours on one spot and move their car to another spot. And that defeats the purpose of the parking regulations in that lot. So before building a deck or spending taxpayers' money, it is important to look at the, how parking in that lot is managed and, and create, you know, we suggest also going to pay parking in that lot, having maximum two hours paid parking. But even if you don't accept the paid parking, I remember, there's some people shaking their heads.
Yeah, it's a deal breaker.
I remember, you know, I would say even if you don't go to paid parking, it is important to control the duration of people in that lot, in general. Because, you know, what you want is, it's not so much free parking for businesses, but most important part for businesses is turnover. It's not free parking. It's a turnover that can bring more people to, you know, shop and go to the restaurant and so on. So that's just for 7S, and that's separate from this kind of regulation.
I understand.
Do a lot of the municipalities you look at also use valet parking for managing, you said managing parking agency?
Yes, in, in most, yes. In most cases, you know, valet parking is operated by the private, you know, by the restaurant in most cases. And they make an agreement with somewhere, or they bring the car to a municipal lot where there's plenty of parking. So in many cases...
For example, in 7S, we have a lot of restaurants sort of in one corner. I always thought, why can't we let them do valet parking? They can double and triple park cars down at the further end, who cares?
Well, if the parking problem was so severe, the businesses would do it, you know.
We have to give them the right, they don't have the right to do valet parking out here.
Maybe, you're right. But the other part, I think, in 7S that's important, there are people that work in that area that park in 7S, they should not park in 7S.
And they have been encouraged by both the Chamber and others and by the village, and they don't do it, right?
And, and one way to do it is to enforce the parking duration on a maximum of two-hour parking. I think the police department now has licensed paid meters that make that very easy.
But we don't have that at night. We don't have that at night. And we don't, how do you police a person in a restaurant who's out there having dinner and hanging out for two, three, four hours? And how do you do that? I, that's why I viewed valet parking as a much simpler system. And then you free up spaces, and it doesn't matter if the few employees from those restaurants are parking there too.
But typically, you know, the, the parking gets enforced in the evening, that's, I don't show how you do it. Most places it's still six or 7:00 PM, and then after that, the restaurant, the key is to keep the employees and the restaurant employees out of that parking lot and make the parking spaces available to the restaurant customers. And to do that, you enforce the parking duration of you 7:00 AM. Good after that, you know, there's, there's going to be plenty of proof. But it's that, to make sure that nobody parks for more than two hours in that lot for lunchtime, you know, that's sufficient, that two-hour period is sufficient, that creates enough room. That would be the first step to do and see how that improves the condition.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was very interesting. This time we have a trustee board session, Castle Boulevard, train station rehabilitation board.
As we put this on, we don't do it now, but we have to deal with it at some point. We have to deal with it soon because we're expecting to get some funds from the community fund, the railroad, the third track, we've got to make this.
Do they have a co-op date?
If we done Garden City within a year, so we made third addresses, either tonight or...
You want to address it in September?
As long as we do, we, we got to get something in.
It's terrible, no.
Okay, if you want to...
We might as well meet now. I mean, it's going to be hard to beat the traffic, you know, it's exciting, but I think the brick, the brick is...
I'd like to know, why don't we consider, was it cost the brick versus...
Exactly, I, I do this is pretty academic, but we need...
Why is the difference...
So Tia, come on, we'll do it, let's go, Tia.
So there, there are a number of alternatives that we can do with this parking lot. First of all is we can do nothing, we can cost us nothing, leave it the way it is. It's been in this condition for, it's almost 100 years old, it's lasted this long. I wish all my parking lots would last 100 years. The other options, I have a few of them where we could, let me just give me a second. We can do a number of different things here. We can remove the bricks that are there, save the ones that are viable, that are still viable, and use them to possibly outline parking spots in both lots, use them as the lines of the lots.
So the asphalt with brick, strike be...
Correct.
In the, in the paving that indicates spots, and they're the historic bricks that were there.
Correct.
Just clarify.
Right. You can ignore the top lot, which is a paved lot, and outline the existing lot with bricks, pave it, and use it as an outline of the border. I just throw a couple of ideas out there.
What were you going for?
Sure.
What we're talking about in this project, are we talking about just doing this lot next to the train, or are we talking about the north lot? Does that need to be done as well?
Well, the north lot is asphalt.
No, I know it's not, I know it's not brick. What I'm saying to you, as long as we're paving one, would it not make sense for us to just simply do both, or does the second lot not need it?
Well, I think if you're paving the one, you might as well, since you're, you don't want to return and go back and do it another time. It probably should.
The south lot is worse than the north lots.
In terms of condition, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, the bricks, if you're under leaning, they're, they're...
No, no, the south lot, the asphalt lot.
Oh, the other side of the track, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The south lot is in much worse condition than the...
Right, I'm definitely, that's what I'm saying to you. So if the north lot, I mean, listen, I mean, from what I understand, if we just simply blacked out the whole thing, it's like 330, no, it's good. I think it's just, I think it's just 330,000. So like I said, if you said, if you said to me, listen, it's $100,000 to do the north lot, and it's $100,000 to do the south lot, then I say, fine. If you sit there and tell me it's a half million dollars to do each lot, then my question is, do I really have to do the north lot? So that's what, you know...
Yeah, now, the lot, if we were just to eliminate all the bricks and pave this lot, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 300, 350,000 dollars.
Just the north to left?
Yes.
The common.
Okay. Just the north lot.
And just the brick lot. Just the brick lot.
Just the brick lot.
No, no, we can't, listen, the brick lot, okay, come with me, just, just follow me. We have the brick lot, we're going to outline it with the bricks. Let's forget about that lot right now. Okay? The other lot that I have, that north lot, go back to the picture.
There are two other lots.
I don't know, I understand that.
This lot.
Go back, okay, go back to the picture you had on the bill.
It's the other sliver.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what I'm saying, Joe, turn over there, turn over there, the other lot. That's right. Yes, that lot. So that's my question. So that lot is blacktop right now?
Yes.
Okay, to blocktop just that, how much is that cost?
I don't know the size of it, say...
Because the 300,000 dollars is just for the brick lot.
Correct. That's a full rebuild.
The other one, I can see it right here.
That's a full reconstruction. Full reconstruction and paid. That's a full reconstruction and paid. If you're just doing a mill and pay it, it would be less than that.
Okay, all right, let's say 200,000 dollars. Okay, fine. All right, so, so Brian, what you're saying is, we have one of those in the north, and then we have the south.
There are three lots on the north side.
Right.
One of which was done probably ten years ago. But what in that picture was not, there was a south lot on the south side of the tracks, which is in worse condition than the other asphalt lot on the north side.
All right. Go to space three.
You're talking about this lot and here.
So, to be clear, this is an, this is an issue of our own making, right? We're just saying there's a community fund, how do you do it with the third track? That we could leverage to use to repay the brick lot, which is undulating and doing some funky things for the past...
Right, so the last, the, the other option is we've, I've met, Mrs. Swazan, I've met with paving companies who will restore the bricks, who will either, will take these up, try to salvage as many as they can, and then supplement with new bricks to match them, and redo the lot exactly as it is, with the bricks, with the herringbone pattern the way it is. And that's in the neighborhood of about a million of the hair dollars.
I think it was a million seven.
Well, it's contingency, but whatever.
As, as, as you noted on the agenda items tonight, nothing comes in with a cost, so if he says a million five, it's a million eight.
So if, if we did the lot with just the brick outlined and then ashwalled the rest of it, that then would be how much?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm going to say between 300,000 and 500,000.
Okay.
With the brick striking and the rest of the lot.
With the brick striking, it would look great. Now, again, we also have the brick outside, the wall, that's a separation.
That's separate, and we've already been walking through...
The wall should be done because it's...
The wall should be, because it's all history, there's so many...
Actually, they're completely separated.
Those are separate.
Right. That containing one, this is two different ones.
And I've worked with contractors to evaluate the walls.
In, in the brick of life as it is, well, Harry does. There are about four of these, you know, undulations.
Yeah, they're disabled.
Right.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Here's my question.
Yeah, questions?
People said to me that you could fix those drops, all right? Just fix those drops and do a very good job at it, then we that out, and then you have the entire brick of life.
I think the issue is the condition of the bricks. Once you take the bricks up, you don't know what condition they are.
How are the bricks, how are the bricks that are in the front?
I, I have to say, I think Teresa's totally right. I, I think you just maintain, we're creating an issue, we're telling ourselves a story that it's like, it's really, really bad and terrible, but honestly, I've lived here nine to eighteen months, and those undulations have been there the whole time, and we're only kind of getting there now. Now, if you say, from the community fund, they can give us a million eight to redo it, and it's a freebie, have that.
I don't think...
But if we're just creating this to like, to pontificate at a meeting, it's a 10 to 10, I would say, let's just drag work on the undulations and build them there. Flatten it out, and let's move on. I doubt it would be...
No, no, no.
No, we can get that amount.
I, I live there. Every day. It's not four undulations. And that lot needs to be redone, whether it's this year or it's six years from now. The theory was, if we can get someone to help us pay for it, let's do it now.
Exactly, maintain it, yes. Replace in total, I think is a bigger amount than anyone wants to push. But if you say, hey, I want to regrade it, you know, I want to go after the worst parts of it, flatten them out, maybe we have a fight in hand.
Could we get an ESPO to do that? To see if it's even possible to do it, to see how many bricks we could have to replace?
To take the entire...
Let's, why don't we try to get ESPO to see how much it could cost to preserve the end?
Go after the worst parts of it, and then let's see what, what comes out.
It should be less than a million seven.
I'm trying to think.
And reuse as much as they can, if they can.
Yeah. It's very complex, it's, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a, it's basically, it's meant to be driven on, compressed down, it's fantastic. Pull it up, there's obviously something underneath it that's less... So in those areas, we want to take it, I forgot. No, but you know what I mean, like, let's maintain it, let's look at a maintenance cost for it, using all the same material, putting down, replacement would be that, but I'm sure that's going to be a lot more, obviously, we're going to get a lot of money in that and see if it's possible, and then let that muscle, see if it's possible.
Well, I think that, I think that trustee Droni, you know, I think that trustee Droni brings up a good point. You know, again, if you happen to go in the West, one of the things that happened was that as they started to do the track work, one of the things that the village worked with the long railroad was to have them redo the Sioux matter station. And the reason for it was, is because at, when they get to the point where they're actually going to do the largest parking project, which is actually in my block road, there's going to be tremendous amount of increase in usage in Sioux matters. So what happened was, they redid the station, they redid the parking lots and everything else, so none of this brickwork or anything, and they ashwalled this, and they did all the smartest, one of the things we've done on it. So the reality of it is, is that Nashville Boulevard, if you... So the reality of it is, is that Nassau Boulevard, if you kind of look at it, it's kind of like the same distance in a sense, down from Harold. And what ends up happening is, is that with this fund that's set up, we originally were talking about setting aside, I believe somewhere around, around 700,000. That 700,000 is about 28% of the fund. Now, again, that's a reasonable number, because again, you have to leave the majority of the fund to people who live right next to the train tracks, because you don't know what other things have to be done. But if we're sitting here, and again, if I just do basic math, if the north lot and the south lot are 200,000, which is that's 400,000, and if we basically spend, I don't know, about 200,000 or so on the wall, and if we spend another 200,000 dollars on this lot, how much would we be correct it? And basically, it's up to about 80,000 dollars. If we apply to that fund, which is the same way that we did the West with Seward Manor, if we apply for that 700,000, basically, we can do all this work done. And of course, it's about 100,000 dollars. But Trustee Dorni is correct, is that this is something that we have to do sooner rather than later, because we have to have those being submitted, and we have to have this in the process, because that amount of money dealing with us now, again, they're going to still be destructing this third track for a couple of years to come. But again, we need to have the process go through, because it takes time.
I agree with that. 200,000 dollars for the wall, I don't want that to go on the paper.
Well, the wall's going to, actually, I think they spent on the wall was a quarter million dollars. So 200,000 would be preserved.
I think we can find a better way to restore it.
He said we...
Vail and Wakes.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I actually, you give me half, I'll give my cousin over here a brand new brick wall. No, I, you know, the math is fuzzy, but yes.
Yeah, that's, I'm just throwing a big step in.
Why did you say that date was, we have to have this wall accomplished by now?
Yes, your vacation.
So let's just get a price for maintaining the brick, and then paving the south lot, and paving the north lot, and the wall. I think we could get a little better of that, and then probably figure it out.
Mrs. Wood, do you have a sense of how much we recruit someone to determine expenses?
So we've only applied so far for the survey consultants. That was put at the last agenda. And we were approved for the, up to 50,000 dollars for that consultant. And we've recently applied for some additional funds for traffic that the police department is occurring due to this project, and that was about, for 20,000 dollars that was applied for. So that's an estimate for this fiscal year, so we're still waiting for authorization on that. And I believe there's some, some costs associated with the water department that will be applied for as well. And the estimate for that is about... Okay, so for the year, about 20, yeah, so a total, you know, less than 100,000 so far.
Yeah, I agree. Just give us choice, Jeff.
Can I ask you a question?
All right, this time we'll have citizens' comments on nine agenda items. Please raise your hand to be recognized, and your comments must be limited to four minutes. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Harry Tavidian. My wife Kathy and I reside at 46 Wyatt Road. We purchased our home in 2013. Last month, we contracted with Jack Gason Plumbing to replace our gas boiler. We paid a 495 dollar mechanical applications fee, and shortly thereafter, we were told that we were required to pay an additional 1,485 dollars due to the fact that when the house was converted from oil to gas in 2002, the respective fee was not paid. What I point out, that's two previous owners for months. It's extremely unfair to penalize someone for a possible mistake made by someone else 17 years ago. So I say possible because there are facts that we believe that the fee may have possibly been paid. The owners of the home at the time of conversion were Eleanor and Robert Kraus. They performed renovations in the home in early 2002, for which they applied and received the building permit. In addition, the Krauses also promptly abandoned the oil tank after the conversion to gas. The verification is filed on the Nassau County Department Health website indicating that the abandonment was completed in April 2002 by ESI contract. So I have the building permit from 2002, and I have the verification from the Nassau County website that the oil tank was properly abandoned. So it's hard to believe that the Krauses properly completed the building permit as well as the abandonment process, but they did not obtain, pay for an application fee for the boiler for conversion from oil to gas. So they sounded like diligent people, they did what was required, but for some reason, they may or may not have applied for the boiler replacement permit. I find that a little hard to believe. There's other factors. The house was subsequently sold by the Krauses to Helene Friedman, from whom we purchased it in 2013. The building department does not have our name, or did not have our name as the owner of the house as of last month, and we purchased it in 2013. We received a notice of open permits from the building department in April 2018 that was for work that was done in 2004 by Helene Friedman. This came to 46 Wyatt Road, our residence, but it was addressed to Helene Friedman. In addition, when we paid for the 1,485 dollars in additional fees, my wife Kathy asked for a receipt. The initial receipt was made out to Helene Friedman. So Kathy asked, why doesn't the building department have, the department buildings know that we own the home? She comes here to pay property taxes, the water department, water bills, there's no problem there. And she was told, sometimes the paperwork doesn't make it up. So I'm not trying to disparage the building department, but what I'm trying to say is, something that happened 17 years ago by someone else, the paperwork could be misplaced or misfired. But even if it wasn't, why is the village penalizing your residents or your neighbors 17 years after something probably or may have happened, and for which we had nothing to do with? I paid a 500 dollar fee, why do I have to pay 1,500 dollars in penalties on top of it? Again, that's extremely unfair. Garden City's a lovely place to work. I tell you, I don't work here in Garden City. I commend the board of trustees and the village staff for everything they do for the village. But this is extremely unfair, and I would expect it more for the village of Garden City. We pay our taxes, we follow the rules and regulations, and consider ourselves good citizens. I mean, this almost seems, if borders aren't being unethical, not fair. Now, I'm not saying anyone here is unethical, I'm saying this rule does not make sense. I respect, so I'm here to lay out the facts, and respectfully, because the refund of the 1,485 dollar penalty paid by us for something that may or may not have happened by someone else 17 years ago.
May I suggest that you, we're making an appointment for you with Mr. Swazian and Mr. Chio Boniello, and you can sit down and discuss this and get this all straightened out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chio, also. Next. Is there anyone else who would love to speak this evening? Yes.
Hello, I'm sure you probably all know who I am by now, Teresa McCall of Gilbert Road. Good evening, Mayor Truvey and Board of Trustees. As you are aware, we are once again requesting to be placed on the agenda for a formal vote regarding a one-year lease extension for the Cathedral Nursery School. We attended both the June and July meetings to share the difficult situation that we find ourselves in as a result of the termination of ours. We were encouraged when trustees reached out to us both in public session and privately to offer their support and assistance. We were encouraged by trustees to develop a plan demonstrating that our need for an extension would be a short term. We are proud to say that we did exactly as was asked of us. We have a wonderful long-term plan in place that clearly demonstrates our need for extensions of short term. We are so excited to share that after much hard work, we have found a great long-term home for our school. We are being welcomed into a wonderful institution that already has plans underway to build a brand-new facility with adequate space to house our program. We are so excited that we will be able to save hundreds of 2-3-4-year-old children from the disruption of having their nursery school shut down, but we can't do it without the village's help. Our new facility will be under construction and will not be ready for next year. If the village could please assist us by allowing us to remain in our current home for one more year, then we will be able to keep our program alive, continuing to serve hundreds of Garden City's little ones and employing more than 20 Garden City residents. Please provide us, and please help us to provide access to a wonderful early education program for our little ones. Please help us to maintain a program that is so dear to many of our residents' hearts. Please help us to spare our babies the anxiety and heartache of experiencing multiple transitions in a short period of time. Stability is so extremely important at this young age. Please help us by putting the one-year lease extension on the September agenda and supporting us in our transition to a new space. Without your help, the school will be unable to survive, and hundreds of children will lose someplace that they have grown to love. Additionally, without the extension to facilitate our transition, many of our children will be left without a pre-K or nursery school placement in our own home unit. We are asking you again to please place us on the September agenda. If this is not the process to be put on the agenda, I kindly ask you to please spend a few minutes of your time this evening to explain the process to us. Thank you.
All right. I thank you for your comments, and I think that, you know, that we would have to reconsider that the fact that we may not be able to legally enter into another contract with you. Now, there, I know that's hard to accept, but we are government, we are, it's our responsibility to follow the law and the running of the village, if for no other reason to protect the village from liabilities. I would suggest that you try to find another place that would suit you, that would serve your needs. We really can't, we don't, you think of, you're new, I'm glad to hear that you found something new, and that it's very solid, and that it's going to happen. We simply can't address this for you or give you another year. And we have shared that information with you on the contracts each year, telling you that this was the last time that this could be taken care of. This is an unhappy subject for all of us, okay? It's unhappy for us on the board or side. It's not an easy thing to do. But we explained it thoroughly, the last conversation, the last board meeting that we had, and we really gave you very straight information, and we just aren't going to be able to do that for you. Next?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is James Rigano, and I'll be addressing the Cathedral Nursery School's request for a lease extension for one year. I'm here on behalf of the Greek Orthodox Cathedral on Cathedral Avenue, just south of the Garden City border. I'm a member of the parish council and chair of the nursery school at the Greek Orthodox Cathedral. We are developing an education building on our property, which we plan to use for the Cathedral Nursery School. We expect our education building to be ready within two years, as the summer of 2021. Our president, priest, executive committee, and our parish council are very supportive of the Cathedral Nursery School moving to the Greek Orthodox Cathedral. And in the event that the education building is not ready in two years, we're prepared to accommodate Cathedral Nursery School's students in existing facilities as a contingency plan, which is not IPL, but it will be disruptive to the students. And I'm here to assure the board that the Greek Orthodox Cathedral is enthusiastic about the Cathedral Nursery School moving to our facilities in 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
I'd just like to comment. For those of you who were here last time we had this discussion, there has been a series for many years that we gave one-year extensions. And again, what ended up happening was, schools has known for years that they had to move on, that this was a temporary situation. Of that, there is no doubt, okay? I don't care what anyone tells you, that's not the case. But they actually moved this response. And they came to us, as I read last time I read to you the contract, and it basically said, you know, we work on a two-year program, can you please give us a two-year lease? And in the contract that we signed with it, it said, we will not come back for another extension. The problem that we have with the board is now, you're basically coming back to us and saying, okay, well, but this time we really need it. And you can give us the year. So what happens is, the building is not built. I don't know where they are totally bull to financing for this. But the reality of it is, is that when you're building an entire building and everything else you're doing, things happen a lot. And what happens is, all of a sudden, a year from now, you say, you know what? It's not going to be ready in time. So we just need one more extension, okay? Or something happened between your agreement and between the church, and you end up parting ways. They're going to charge you too much unfleet expense, or the church makes a decision that something happens in the church, and the church burns down, and now they can't afford to build a school, whatever happened. So now what ends up happening is, we're in the same situation again. So actually, I had spoken to Mr. Rigano, we were talking about a different matter, and this was brought up. And one of the things I mentioned to him was, is that if in the event this is the case, and I pretty much have an idea of the land that they have behind the church, one of the things that you can do is you can continue to operate the school, and one year from now, on their property, you could sit there and you could set up modules. And what happens is that, again, I grew up in a story in Queens, PS70, and I remember before they built all the additional parts of building that they did, they hadn't got the funding, they hadn't did whatever. So what they did was, they put modules in the side of the school for three or four years. And then later on, they took modules away, and they did the construction that they did. So the reality of it is, the school does not have to cease to exist. The school can sit there, work with the church, and you can actually put modules on their property, and in a year, you can move there. This has no disruption at all to the children, to the school, to what you're doing. The difference is, is that you're going to be at the location where you're eventually moving to in a year. So the reality of it is, is that you do have an option, and that's one of the options that you can do. So I'm just giving you my...
All right.
Word to Mayor, Trustee Joseph Ardito, Attorney for the U. of M. School. Just would like to bring up the point, as we are aware, the school is occupying space under license agreement. And such agreement is permitted for this type of framing.
That's not accurate.
It is accurate.
It's not.
So it's been operating under such agreement for the past 13 years.
It's not accurate. Do you have any, you're entitled to your opinion, if that's not an accurate portrayal of the law?
Well, my view of it is, and is also part of a memo from Mr. Fishburg, Councilman for the Village, is that the village never designated St. Paul's as part of it. Without it ever being dedicated as part of it, it would be a part of the public trust.
We also designated Warford.
It is designated as part of the trust.
You sought under freedom of information, you got the resolution where it was designated as part of it.
Despite such, the handbook that... Despite such, the handbook that, as the mayor requested, that we referred to does allow authority to a municipality such as Garden City to grant authority for occupancy under a license agreement, which is exactly what the school has been occupying this space for the past fifteen years.
That is not an accurate statement of the law, councillor, and you know it's not an accurate statement of the law.
So, are we not occupying this space, my client, rather? I am occupying this space.
The limitations, as you well know, and if you don't know, I'm surprised, are that the, the uses that are allowed by New York State are park-related. And there is a New York Court of Appeals case that explicitly states, schools are not park-related. There is no leeway here on the legal act, none.
It was designated as parkland, that was potentially the case, but the courts looked further as to.
It is designated as parkland, councillor.
Excuse me, if I, if I could just say something. Sure, enough, take away from your time, okay? Whether or not you could be there because of parkland or not, doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. If that's the crux of your argument. Again, I'm not an attorney. I concede it. It's not the point. The point is, is that this arrangement was made years ago. The, the men, the people who run the school were told, and I have proof since two thousand and seven, that this was a temporary situation, that they had to find this young area. Whether or not it's parkland or not has nothing to do with this. This is something here, we now have a fence around the building. We're now going to sit there and have construction work that's going to be done. The last thing I want to do is have a school that's sitting there right next to this building where the work is being done. I have, we have to deal with that as a board for the next year. But again, if the crux of your argument is, is that the reason that you should leave us there is because in your belief, you think that under parkland, we're allowed to be there. For me, I'm not an attorney, I concede your point. It has nothing to do with it. It has nothing to do with the bottom line, that we sat here and made an agreement with the school. The school made the decision, they made a business decision. And that business decision was to stay in the location where you were at because it was so much less expensive for them. They developed the area that was in, and they did not look for alternative. Now they're sitting here, now they are in, in a bad place, and now they're sitting here coming to us and saying, listen, you need to bail us out because we didn't do our due diligence, and now we're sitting here with parents and their children who are in a bad situation. So this is, so again, not to take away from your time, but I hope that you have some other point of your argument rather than it's parkland and we can be there. Is if that's it, that's not the point. There hasn't been no determination by a court. Nobody sought a declaratory judgment to deem this to be an improper use or an alienation of the parkland space. That, that would have to be determined before someone can state that this is an improper use, so.
Councillor, that's not true.
Whether it's a proper use or improper use, it doesn't make a difference. We made a, we made a contract with your client, as we have done for years, except your client came to us and said, please give us a two-year agreement. We made the agreement. And now they're coming to the public and saying, oh my gosh, you guys have to help us because we had no idea that this was coming. I have, I have the article here, and I'm trying to prevent myself from reading the stuff that I have here that was put into the newspaper, where they said, oh my gosh, we had no idea that this was coming. And that's not true. So I'm just saying to you, as the attorney who represents them, please go to a different point, because I don't care about the parkland point. It has nothing to do with why you can't stay there. And so the point being made is we're occupying the space under license agreement, which is permissible. Which expires soon, which is.
Who are you representing? Are you representing the Cathedral Nursery School? The management of the Cathedral Nursery School?
Cathedral Nursery School, yes. So, they were managed for.
So they entered into agreement, which trustee Goldwork is telling you, that basically said, at the end of this school year, you're going to have to move on. We heard a gentleman from the Greek church say that there's a possibility that it can be accommodated, maybe not optimal. You heard trustee Goldwork suggest portals, which have been used in many schools, including Garden City in the last ten years, multiple times. So you have a plan. You have a contract that says you can be there after a year.
All right, I'm going to have to interrupt you because time's up. I'm sorry. Thank you for your remarks. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Julia Paradino-Aclavito. I live on Weatherall Road. Just, just so we're clear, like, I, is it, if it's not illegal, if it's not parkland, it is.
It is.
No, I know, that's not the issue.
It is parkland. It's not the issue for Bob.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm trying to.
But like, for the world, it's parkland.
I meant, I meant it's not the issue, because that's what we just said.
It's not, I know about Bob.
If it saves, like, and then I'm hearing safety, but what about all the programs that are going to be going on at St. Paul's? I mean, does it not affect them? Is the safety not going to be issue for, like, soccer, ballet?
They'll have to move over to the season.
Okay. I have seventy is tremendously closer than this, it is a block away from the soccer field. Okay, yeah, I just was asking, I mean, about the safety, because my kids participate every year. But, um, I just feel like we're disappointed because we were led to believe that if we, we just, we've had so much momentum in the last few months, and we finally did get a plan. And I feel like we reached out, private people talked privately, saying they were willing to help. I'm sorry, I'm going to trip me over my words, but I feel like we were led to believe that if we had a plan, we might be considered friends, and is that even right?
Listen, I think you've given a tremendous amount of effort, okay? I know there was one trustee who, who expressed that, okay? But again, like I said, I think you have a great plan. I think that the church is a fabulous organization, and I think that you should sit there and work things out with them, and I think that if the building is built and you do the modules and you do everything else, you work with them. I mean, from everything I know about the church, from everything I've seen, especially having talked to Mr. Rigano, I think you have a impactful apartment, and I think it's a great location and.
Yeah, I'm very excited about it. I mean, we are a little worried, I mean, I don't know the cost of module or how they, I don't even.
Thank you for your remarks. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? In that event? May I? But may I have a motion to go into executive session? This is to discuss matters of litigation. Uh, trustee Laney, second, trustee McAdos, others in favor, opposite, or dis.